of Molly Field, I did not see that reflected in here. There was significant opposition to the resolution, I'd like to see that reflected in the minutes. People took their time to come here and get their voices heard and saw reflected in the minutes.
There are separate minutes for pre-council.
Okay, well.
But they're not official, there's a record, absolutely, I can provide them to you. There are separate, there's a whole book of pre-council minutes we keep of every meeting. Um, keeping the record of everybody that speaks and what they speak about. So that is done, but it's not an official council record because it's before the council, it's pre-council.
It's not part of the council minutes because we haven't convened at the council yet.
So they do keep track of it, but it's a separate thing?
Yeah, I understand, I still think it should, there needs to be one sentence reflecting the fact that there was significant opposition. Whether it's pre-council or during council, that it was, it was in direct reference to a resolution of the council.
I'm assuming we don't, we don't do that because of that reason, because of the fact that it's.
But it's.
Their page is long and there's a whole set of minutes about that meeting. Uh, but they're pre-council, so that's, it's not.
So it's not part of the.
Before the official record of the council meeting, but we do have full sets of those minutes.
So our complaint is not official.
So these, these minutes are detailed, which is why during the city council meeting. And that doesn't begin until we convene this is the council. All of that pre-date comes before the city council, so it's not appropriate for it to be here in the minutes.
What is the point?
No, he understands, he's still fixing lines.
Well, I just, I just think this should just be at least one sentence that would suggest that there was significant opposition.
We don't get paid to be here.
Just so people looking at the minutes can say, you know, it's something happening here.
The purpose of minutes are to be a public record for the history. Come on, yeah.
What's the purpose of public input if we're not even part of that?
So I mean, that's the way it's always been, maybe that's the way.
Of course, it's always been that way.
No, but I'm saying that's the way, um, excuse me, that's the way it's always been by the show, the way we've always had it that way, correct?
We just put it there, so everybody at home can really look at it. Um, so there, there's a set of pre-council minutes, it's always, we have, just like the county committee minutes, those are official council records of the meeting. Pre-council happens prior to convening, we still keep a detailed record of who spoke, their address, what they talked about. And it's all dated and kept in books, I got a whole room full of books. And they're, they're all in order by date order, so that there is correlation between the two. But it is prior to the convening of the meeting, so that's why it's not part of the council's, council meeting record.
No, and again, I mean, I do understand that, I'm not asking that all the comments or anything in that be reflected in the council minutes. However, I think a simple sentence, just applying it back to a significant opposition during the pre-council, um, meeting.
The only problem with that is, you wouldn't do that, it wouldn't make any sense because then you'd be doing, you'd have to go back to records of constant things that happen similar to your Molly Field or anything else. That would constantly be in there, you'd have to go back and change it, which is, you're not going to do that. I mean, I'm assuming this is proper, so if it's proper, you can't make an exception, that would make no sense.
Typically, so if there's, if there's something that a council would want to state for the record, then you state for the record. And that gets documented in the minutes, so you, at that meeting, you stated for the record. A significant opposition was made to this resolution at the time of the vote committed for the record, that would be recorded. But if, if, that's not a recording of the convening meeting, as I'll say.
All right, listen, however, uh, I did make statements regarding the enormous amount of opposition.
Discussion is not recorded as part of the meeting unless it's made for the record.
And public comment should be part of the meeting.
I'm not sure that I follow, during the council meeting, I'm not talking about the pre-council.
I don't know, Frank, Frank can jump in, I mean, we record the votes taken, that's the minutes of the meeting, is recording the votes taken. All of the discussion, like say at budget time, everybody talks about the budget. All of that discussion happens, it's online, it's recorded, but it's the minutes reflect the votes. And so if you want to state something, like a motion is a vote, those are on the record. Uh, if you want to state something for the record, you have to, you have to state, I'm, I'd like to make a statement for the record. And that gets recorded into the minutes, otherwise the minutes are not discussion, minutes are votes.
We should change that.
All right, I'll remember that the next time, thank you.
You guys should change that, that's what you should do.
Any other comments on the minutes at all, or any changes? All those in favor, aye, all opposed?
Just question, before I move on to item two, I have a letter here from the Director of Administration regarding, uh, opera funds. I will summarize it into two pages, but I just have to comply with the company agenda for the next meeting.
Motion made by Council Mercer, seconded by Council Derosa, that a letter from the Director of Administration to address the Texas City Council, dated November third, two thousand twenty-two, regarding opera funding, uh, fee.
And I guess I'd like to make a motion to, uh, the agenda for the purpose of introducing a, a new correspondence.
Motion made by Council Mercer, seconded by Council Derosa, we amend the agenda to introduce new correspondence. All those in favor, all opposed, motion carry.
Now I would like to make a motion to file a communication presented from the Director of Administration.
Motion made by Council Mercer, seconded by Council Derosa, that we file a communication, have the Director of Administration regarding opera funds, and have that part of the, uh, agenda for the next council meeting.
Yeah, I, I. Can we send one meeting to talk to Dylan Gilazzo about Afra, who can also be come to a meeting before the last two meetings that we have?
So you would like to have him know?
Yeah, I read the letter that he has sent back, I do have some questions, I do have conversations that I think I would like to have with him in the open, if we could.
Okay.
There's still a lot of money left.
I agree as well, I think this accounting for, well, we can just save it for the next time.
Yeah, we just can't stop.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I know, so what you're saying, we're going to put it on the agenda for the next council meeting. Can we ask if Dylan will be available and can come, so he can talk about Afra?
Yeah, we can do that, and how many minutes we want to put aside for that, we can do that for pre-council. We can try to do it for the next meeting. So, no, unless you want to make an official motion, or do you want to just? All right, so we, let's see what you can do. All those favor, all those favor, file it, aye, all opposed, motion carry.
Uh, I guess I'd like to move approval of the consent agenda and correspondence.
Motion made by Council Mercer, seconded by Council Rujia, that approve the consent agenda and correspondence, are there any items the council would like to discuss?
Yes.
Council Derosa.
E, um, F. And H.
Anybody else else to go ahead?
You want F or you want G? Huh? Do you want F or do you want G?
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry, 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 I want G, because I want that.
C, E, G.
All right, so now C wasn't too difficult.
Sorry.
C?
C, name badges, the C, and probably that's, that's part.
So you want C, E, G, and H?
Yeah.
Council Scobie, I, you are, I have F?
Yes, please.
Anything else? All those, all those in favor, approving the consent agenda and correspondence, seconded by, aye, all opposed, motion carry, Council Derosa, item C.
Um, so I wanted to speak to the law department, I guess, as a whole, um. I know, like, the process and the system, the, you know, the way of filing a lawsuit can be very, uh, long and draining. Um, especially, um, you know, we have some cases of things that are involved. Yeah, it's several different stuff, people who got hurt, um, different cases going on. Um, and I have followed through people through some of these cases, um, they've been pretty draining, pretty long, pretty expensive. Um, how does, I wanted to know what the law department is doing, like, I know last year when you guys had, um, uh, Apex. That we had to spend extra money to kind of push that forward and get, and get that, you know, get that resolved as soon as possible. Um, is that something that they'll be doing to help us with these other smaller pieces? I know that my conversation with Frank has been basically because that was such a big case, they had to go out and hire more people to help them get that resolved. We have so many cases on now, some who have been fighting for years, some, you know, things that just are, are recent, um. Um, I don't know if I'm suggesting or asking if, um, the law department will be seeking a, you know, they could put things on their lap for us to approve later in the budget. They're looking to, you know, hire more help so that they can resolve these issues quickly.
So you're saying, all right, so is the question that they, they do use outside counsel for very important issues, that they also don't have any expertise on certain things, but you're wondering if they're still going to use outside counsel for other issues?
I know they're going to, but I, I think I'm suggesting that they do that to resolve these issues quicker.
You're recommending that they actually do, you know, more than they have.
They did that just for Apex, right, and I understand that was a big deal for the city, but I also, I have, we, we have residents who have cases that are five years. You know, that's a long time to sit, I've come to car accidents, I hate waiting for insurance to pay it, and you know insurance. A year and a half later, you know, especially when, um, whatever situation may have cost you money then and took, you know, to wait later, it just, um. I just want to see these cases be resolved in a, in a reasonable time.
You want us to, you can send a letter to Frank, asking him, do, do they consider, or would they consider utilizing other outside counsel to, I guess, finish off some of the cases that have been around for a long time? Do they, you know, because they seem to be sitting around, nobody's fault, just the way the system is, would it assist them, I guess, to use other counsel to try to move some of the cases along that way?
Yeah, but sometimes, um, when you make suggestions like that, they say, well, we need the council to give us the money, the finance, um, chair, to talk, bring it back to the council. They need to tell us to go out and to do this and to spend that money, and I, I, like, I really looking for these cases to be resolved. And I know they have a lot going on, different cases, big cases for the city, but I would like these.
Well, they have a line, I am complaining judgment, whatever, I don't know what the amount is, I don't remember, but I mean, they, I mean, they use that for trials and, and, I'm assuming they can use it for whatever they need to do without.
But, but a lot of the two, depends on the court dates and the courts when these schedules start, right, but you're better off to talk to the, to Frank and turn around and just, the council, Miles, and then ask him. If he feels as in a need for additional resources to be either sent out, sent out to help, uh, the amount of cases that the council's talking about.
Yeah.
To resolve that, or if he feels that he can get that accomplished without having to outside counsel.
That's the point of additional resources.
So you don't need to, council will mean, I'm sorry, I was listening, so.
He just made a very good point.
During, Council Miles has always indicated in the past, certain times, it depends on, sometimes with the court scheduling, what it is and stuff. But if there's a need, if, if you feel there's a need to turn around and ask him if he needs additional help to resolve. And actually farm some more of those cases out, so we can get a quicker result, you could ask him that question, I'm sure he can provide it with an answer.
That is definitely the question that I, that, you know, the person I'm giving it. Um, I know that sometimes they'll hold it in court, of course, the schedule is fine.
And I think what I need to say.
Yeah.
I, I, I think his answer will be having outside legal counsel is not going to change the fact that there's someone in order field that.
It might be, yes. But it might change some of the favoritism of one of the pieces, also that he knows that the world of your needs to be resolved, and that he needs.
And wasn't to give, is it?
The money, whatever he needs, that we, that's what we want to see happen.
All right, so motion made by Council Derosa, seconded by, I guess, Council Mercer, that we send a letter to Frank Miles, City Solicitor, asking him to review these cases, certainly wanting to just send us what issue. Would he consider, is there consideration of using additional resources to potentially speed up resolution of some of the cases that have been around for a long time? So would he consider, if, if it's something that they consider presently, that they go on, that's something that they can try to add additional resources to help resolve, something to hold, hold cases? We get a response by the next meeting, all those in favor, all opposed, motion carry.
Item E, Council Derosa.
Item E, so, um, for a few times in my tenure as, um, the councilor, I have brought up communities united, um, for a positive change in Pawtucket. Um, a, in twenty twenty, after a large Floyd shooting, um. We met with Pawtucket community leaders, it was not just myself or Christine Bento, Lynn Farinelli actually wasn't even in the room. Up until this time, when we have brought things to the attention of the chief or mayor, and even the council before I've gotten here. We have felt ignored when we're trying to bring issues up, was, you know, about the police. So, um, I have a lot of, um, very happy that Christine, um, while we were going through stuff in Providence. You know, despite people looking at maybe us advocating for certain people and certain things, we take it in the wrong context. Uh, what we didn't want to see is there to be a protest or to be that kind of disconnect between the community of people of Pawtucket and, and the police. We have never wanted to see a, um, protest, you know, against the police, maybe derogatory, towards going against them. We do understand people feel certain reasons, um, want to protest, but we've never gotten behind that word, where we wanted to be us against us, us against them here in the city. So we've always inserted ourselves as somebody who we would like to keep the peace in the community. Um, there has been actually only, I believe, the last police shooting that was there prior to this. Every time there was a police shooting, at least Paul King would reach out to me, uh, and other community leaders, and figure out, no matter what the storyline was. Um, how we can keep order in the community and how we can maintain a positive relationship between the police and, um, the community. Uh, over a decade ago, um, the organization that I founded, um, met with, uh, Paul King and the U.S. United States Department of Justice. And I said, we've signed a mediation agreement between the city of Pawtucket and the residents here, all in hopes to move things in a better direction. So when things happened in twenty twenty, nobody was happy about it, we wanted to bring people from Pawtucket together to talk about it and to see how it could be changed. The executive director of NAACP, um, we had Alma Pino, who's the early action officer in Providence. We had people from CACP, we had Megan Cowman, who was on, um, the council, uh, we had multiple representation at the table. And we sent a letter over to the, um, mayor and to the chief, I know, and the council, all in this thought about our approach. It wasn't a request, it was a demand, that we address the issues that were having him in the community. Um, and we figured by bringing everybody together, and being of all of us community leaders, that we won't get ignored because they don't like one or two people out of you. Um, so these meetings were going well, uh, they were going, um. And there were multiple demands, I think it was about forty demands.
Forty-three.
Huh? Forty-three demands, um, and we asked that they give us an answer back. Uh, one of the things that we brought up was the name badges for, um, police officers. And at the time, um, especially since I did a lot of outreach work, I'm always at the scene on crime. Um, there would be times where officers wouldn't say their name, and I would be confused because I knew they can get in trouble with that, so I'd be like, why would they not simply give their name? And I would see officers not wearing their badges, but I had no clue that they were, it was new, no, nobody was wearing badges at any time. So we discovered that Christine Bento brought that to our attention and we wanted to address it. Um, this request about the name badges happened in twenty twenty, we are in twenty twenty-two, and I want to point one thing out to you guys. We met with the chief and the mayor over and over and over, we brought people in. Um, the mayor decided that he was going to almost replace us with community advisory, um, board that he created. Um, he, and finally hired our constituent liaison and, um, the public health equity, um, person. Um, and so that conversation sort of went, uh, it, it went away for several reasons, really personal stuff. But just because you personally may not like me, or may not like Ms. Bento. We, we can't keep continuing to allow leadership to ignore concerns, especially the concerns that have to do with them, that affect the minority community, the, the voice. Um, so I, I, I wanted to address E because I just wanted to point out to you guys that she still hasn't asked about the badges being changed. Two and a half years later, we're still asking for her to ask something that we asked a long time ago. Also, if you go back to our city council meeting with the defund the police, we were on that call as voters, as residents, talking about the name badges. Um, we really are, really, she shouldn't hear it, but her community meetings and the things that she's doing. And, and one end is, all she has been doing is good, but on this side, she can't continue to ignore this community in the position that she is in. We need somebody that despite what she likes, who she likes, will, you know, continue to advocate for us because the mayor, and I can send you guys the video. Because we were live of them agreeing, we should have name badges, some of the offices with the new change in, in the society. When you ask them, hey, what's your name, and you've seen it live, uh, with the Emily and Francisco Raj, he did this case, when you turn around and say, what's your name? Or turn around and say, well, I'm going to go and report you, that they then get retaliated against. When they ask, you pull me over and I say, well, what's your name, because whatever interaction we just had, I need to go report. Asking for the name is almost like illegal now, you know, that's the energy that we get, and then it's, it's, it's not right. Because it's going to be the reason why we lose somebody, um, for nothing, like, interaction, they go the wrong way, um, especially in the police stock. So I know she said they're getting the body cameras, but even the body cameras get turned on and off. And, um, Ms. Bento's recent case, um, of a police officer issuing a ticket for not being an officer, that was really giving the ticket. Um, she explains are even more valid, valid these, like, um, our patrol officers, those who are doing speeding, pulling people over, doing the traffic. Should be very badges, should be very name badges, so that if there is something that I need to say, um, I know the person's name. Um, and, uh, there's a lot of people who are from the third world, there's a language barrier, um, and they don't know to take the number down on the, on their chest. But if they see the name, it remembers, says Rujia, it's Officer Rujia. Um, so I want to advocate for those that can't advocate for themselves. Um, and I'm hoping that she actually does ask that question to the union, and I hope that they can, um, get on board with the rest of the community. We're not asking every officer to have a badge, um, the ones who are patrolling the traffic, um, who are doing patrols. But, um, she even suggested that, like, they don't get the name badges, that the officers would have business cards. So that if I ask a name, they could just hand the business card, um, so, and they did say that some officers did, but they was going to make sure that all of them. Were equipped with their name, uh, business cards, so that in the case of something happens, um, they have that information.
That's the question, how long ago was that, like, I know you said the group kind of got expanded maybe from the second lot, I would have to, but. How long ago was it, did they promise or at least intimate to you that they would get back to you and say, hey, this is what really should be done, and we're going to do it?
So what happened is they said he's going to do the community advisory board.
Okay.
And that didn't really mesh out to anything until a little while ago, if, if they even asked.
Right.
Um, so that's really what happened, you know, and she gave us a band-aid and then let us go. He thinks he let, let us go, we're not, we have, we're not going anywhere, even the pressure was about to be applied more because I continue, I. The, the work that I do, I can, I continue to see these, like, weird interactions with the police that could go the wrong way. And I'm not, I'm, I'm talking about for the officers too, they're seeing, like, I would prefer the pettiness, like, go away, right? Um, so I think the badges is, like, so that, and I mean it, I'm not meaning the pettiness to the, the police officer, from go, from, from go please. Um, that really solves a problem and prevents anything else, you know, anything from happening and protects everybody too. Because if I have a problem with you as a police officer, yellow officer just handing you a ticket, when I do got a ticket, yellow officer, your name is supposed to be, not D's name. So now when I do make a complaint, I'm complaining about D, because D wasn't even the one that pulled me over. How am I supposed to protect myself, I wouldn't have been able to protect myself if your name was there and I knew your name, or, you know, there was some type of promotion, letting people know that. Our officers are now wearing numbers and that's how they're, you know, being identified, um. This is a very serious topic, um, it's a very important, and if they're not going to do the name tags again. They need to come up with something that would help, um, you know, protect all of us.
But we will definitely, I mean, we will definitely.
I'm not trying to get into the in my own time.
No, but I'm saying we will follow up certainly on your benefit and for the benefit of the community, I mean, I mean, I think it's something that we should know officially.
President Marin, would it be easier if we forwarded the video to you, and you can watch the interaction yourself and see the agreement? Because the mayor's office might have that video, but they might not release it, I can send that directly to you if that's something you want to see for yourself.
I mean, I, I, but my thing is, I really wish, I wish, I wish all of you guys could have seen what was happening in the room. Because we were really trying to make things better, and now it doesn't, it don't seem like we have that anymore, and it seems like things are going this way. And, and I don't want it to go that way, I wanted to, you know, go back to where, you know, people. There was a time at Bean Park when the police drove by, we, we had the police brakes, and we were, because we were scared, because everybody's in a jail, grandmothers, babies. Okay, that's why we called in the United States Department of Justice to help us have a conversation with the police department and the residents. And figure out we need to make things better than we did, and things have, from the mediation, paint puff, to now, the relationship with Pawtucket police back then to now. I have seen, like, a lot of difference, but we need to keep that, that energy going, um, so, you know, I, I, I want, because most of you guys will be here for two years. Or how many years, um, and I, I really want you guys to look at that, see, I know council, you didn't, I, you didn't like the word demand. You didn't like the approach, um, but I do challenge you guys to read that document, if you guys do want the videos, to take a look at it. Because there wasn't nothing personal to me, or to Ms. Bento, it was actually real live stuff that people were dealing with in the community. Things that, um, you know, the chief's answer to some of that stuff, um, you know, some of those, we, yeah, people need to know that stuff. People were, you know, had questions and, you know, there was, you know, some data behind maybe some of the stuff that, you know, like the badges. We didn't know it got changed in the union, and we got to go back to the. and we got to go back to the union and the contract to get a change. That type of transparency is what's needed in the community. So us being able to have those meetings, have them public, have them conversations, and even though we didn't get what we wanted, it feels good to be heard and to know that the people are working on these things. And her taking two and a half years and still hasn't asked a question, and I have to ask her again here and get you guys' support to get it answered back. This isn't for me, I'm not getting pulled over, my pride is hundred percent legit. I'm not going to jail for nothing, I'm not, nothing is going on over here, so, um, yeah, and I'm, I'm nervous, I get nervous. So I can imagine the rest of the, the people and.
All right, we will definitely look into that, we're not going to let that go, definitely not. Counselor Scobie, have the counsel break.
Yeah, I do. I think Counselor, um, DeRosa actually answered my question, what I was going to ask, because I was going to ask if they had names before, but you just said that they did.
Yeah, they did, it was about four years ago or five years ago, six years ago now that it was changed, or two years ago we tried and at that point it was, well, but we tried.
Was that a contractual change?
Yeah, it was a contractual change. See, um, before I took counsel, there was one city council meeting where the contract for the police came up, and there were so many residents on that call that were saying defund the police, you know, with Black Lives Matters, and one, there was a group of people, including myself, who was on there. I wasn't about to fund the police, but I wanted them to hold the contract so that we can bring the badges up, so that the council can go back and say, hey, we want the badges, and they can change it. So that got passed. Then when it got passed, after it got passed, the chief said, well, hey, guess what? We can't do nothing about the badges because it's in the contract. So it was like, yeah, you know, we got bamboozled, right? So now we have to wait, and, uh, wait and wait and wait. And they said, hey, you can, you can go back and make an amendment, but the union's going to have to want to. And, um, you know, like I said, there's a, a need, a relationship need with some members in the group, but it wasn't just, you know, we're not just representing, it's something that has to.
Do other, do others, like, what do, like, how does, how does, I'm very naive about this kind of stuff. So may I have these problems, like, how, is it odd to have numbers?
Yeah, I was curious about the, the other communities.
Some, some.
Some have, some have.
I think probably majority.
Yeah, some of them have just the patrols hats, their name, their, their tags, and the rest of them don't. I mean, there's reasons why they went behind it, I can't give you all of that, but I just think Kentucky is very unique, and I think that they're going to be calling people over that, that name tag has to be there, and that's for everybody's protection.
Well, I appreciate your passion, and I definitely want to see the video and everything.
So we'll send it.
That's a better idea.
We'll send it to you, but it was a few Zooms, we didn't record it all on Zoom because it was a cold day time, so.
All right, that'd be great. Counselor Gray.
Well, I think that was one question I was going to ask, was when, you know, the name change was then came, came about.
Yeah, that was like the one question I had, I think he stopped saying that.
It was four years before twenty twenty, when all this mattered, and I was like, yeah.
It's because I don't understand why the police would not want a name, certainly patrol, especially detectives and all that, it's one thing, but regular patrol people should have a name tag, it makes for better community interaction.
They never announced it either to the public. I, I noticed it and started bringing it forward, and that's when they changed the whole community meeting so that we have the silence, no one can hear the questions being asked. So no one really knew what happened for years.
So I think I just wanted to highlight that this was asked two and a half years ago and was still asked, and you guys are going to continue, you know, on the council, I'm, I'm, I have good thoughts, right? And so I just wanted to point that out because this ain't, she didn't inform me, they were informing countless people in the community. And I know, um, over the last two years, I don't remember who it was, but there was another council who was upset because they don't want to get cause of officers not identifying themselves, they don't want to deal with that, and that, to me, uh, got me a friction fight, so.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to go report up a letter. Item F, Counselor Scobie.
Um, yes, I, um, I followed up, um, with Sergeant Spedelous, and I, I actually very appreciative, I liked, I liked in the letter that we demonstrated that there has been, um, some improvement, and I've actually heard from some residents, um, saying that they've seen the controls and they've noticed a little slowdown. I just also, I, I just would like to still get a response from the administration about if there's any other permanent option we can consider, if any, um, that's all I can say. I would still just appreciate that response.
Motion made by Counselor Scobie, seconded by Counselor Shuvi, that communication be sent to the administration, asking if they could, uh, come up with any permanent options to address speeding issues on Powell Road or.
Correct, this is part of my framework, because people are cutting over from Smithfield. Well, it's been a long transition.
If we can get a response by the next meeting. Any discussions you want to have?
Yeah, I, I thought they were supposed to give some information about the West Avenue, speeding on West Avenue.
Yeah, it's right here. It was so hard to find after leaving.
Well, it was two hundred and something pages, is that?
And I was screaming, no, it's all.
That's key.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ballots, guys, ballots in favor of sending that communication, Counselor Scobie, all in favor? I, all in motion carries. Um, and if you want to come in, I G, but item G, counsel DeRosa.
Item G, so recently, and if I redo this, right, that means that everybody was doing like fifty, right? Forty, fifty?
Does it say like the percentage?
So it, it gives you the hour and breakdown, so between midnight and one A M.
But those are the speeds that they're catching them at, right?
The max speed limit, so at some point between one A M. and two A M. on this date, somebody was doing seventy-six, yes. Uh, somebody was doing, that's really.
So that applies to.
Lot, lot of, but fifty-six, fifty-five, um, fifty-five was just before midnight, so, uh, looking from seven A M. to, uh, five P M. Lowest ten, seemed like all, all, maybe doesn't record under ten. Forty-seven, forty-two, thirty-eight, thirty-seven, forty-three, forty-two, fifty-six, the one I mentioned, forty-one, forty-seven, something like that. Uh, it seems that in each of the values, at least somebody is doing that speed, but it does give you the, the average for that hour. Um, and they're all in the twenty-one, twenty-four range. So that's somewhat correct, too. So seventy-six is, is a problem.
Wherever.
But the average speed for each hour is twenty-three, six, twenty-five, three, twenty-four, two, and even midday goes down to twenty-one, six, twenty-one, eight, twenty-two, three, twenty-six.
The length and it's fast.
The average stay between twenty-one, with the exception of two A M. is.
Oh, okay.
In the twenty-two to twenty-four range.
Okay, so, um, I didn't really get to look at this in terms of, because I was looking at every, every other street, but West Ave, um, so I had somebody, I don't, and I don't know, have you gotten any calls about speeding?
Uh, yeah, not like this month, but, I mean, yeah, we, I do, Pleasant Street, Toledo Avenue, Ranekin Woods, uh, Powell Road, Smithfield Ave, um, a lot of name drags, that's seventy-six mile per hour. One of the reports I get is he stabbed on Pleasant Street, right about seventy, seventy-five miles an hour, I believe, when, when he got that, that truck, the trailer.
Uh.
So that's probably one of the bigger call, a lot of calls, I don't know the percentage is, but yeah.
Yeah, oh, I'm finding a lot of people, uh, I don't know, this, I, I hear people speak by my house all day, but I've been living in the same house for so many years that speeding has become like normal, tired, out of horn and stuff. Um, but over the last forty-five days, I have had maybe like three or four phone calls, um, from two different people who keep complaining about, um, the speeding down West Ave, but coming from, um, the power border there by the Dollar Tree and stuff, or the old Gold's Gym. Yeah, so it's, one thing is by the Gold's Gym, the old Gold's Gym, another one is.
Is that Tucker Avenue or?
Yeah, Tucker Avenue, and then the other, our resident is on the other side of counseling the, a record on West Ave there at the end, um.
So maybe that's for us.
Yeah, our border. Um, so, uh, is, when we get these reports and we have that areas, what do they do after that? Just say, speeding, or they go here and, you know, what, we, how we addressing?
So I think we all have gotten phone calls, especially in the last couple of years, I'm assisting. It's almost developed, you know, everybody is angry, everybody's in a rush, everybody's speeding. I got an email, a very detailed email from somebody a couple weeks ago, uh, from the St. Teresa's area, you know, they're all side change over there, and they all brush the, they run at the roadway stop sign. Um, and he was complaining that blocking his dog, he's complaining with a child, you know, people were speeding, they're, they're running red light, they're running the stop signs. Um, it's, it is, it's almost an epidemic of, of people, and like everything else, it boils down to people being discourteous and about themselves and in all the rest. I think I, I've said this a zillion times on the council, ninety percent of the phone calls I get are about somebody complaining that somebody else is just being unable, discourteous, whether it's speeding, whether it's playing loud music, whether it's shoving their, their snow into somebody else's, you know, drive where they just appear, it goes all the same thing, it boils down to, speeding is another part of human nature where it's, it's, it's difficult to, to get it under control. But to answer your question about these, the first time I asked for it to be deployed was on, um, Benham, which is right, it starts right across the street from the, the entrance on, on Sablea to C D S.